I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Counselor Wood. Counselor Escobell.
Present.
Counselor Allen.
Present.
Counselor Hardy. Counselor Nysley.
Here.
Counselor Vendetti.
Present.
Mayor Villagrana.
Present. We'll move on with the agenda. Approval of agenda. For the consent agenda is five eight. Okay. Could I please have a motion to approve approval of the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Vendetti.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Escobell.
Yes.
Counselor Nysley.
How is it saying?
Mayor Villagrana.
Yes. We'll go on to administrative information. City manager, I had two meetings. I met with the entities, the Colt Town entities, concerning water. And then I had a meeting with, uh, meeting with some individuals concerning what's concerning a project that they had in mind. Basically, the project, I'll be glad to tell you, is that the VA is going to have a second meeting concerning maybe establishing a possible VA regional hospital here. So that is coming up. And I had a meeting with Marty Peak, who is the regional VA representative. Any meetings, Mr. Vendetti?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Mr. Nysley?
No.
Mr. Escobell?
No.
We'll go on. Mr. Allen, you have a statement by the council?
It's kind of been misprinted, and I apologize. It's not a statement by council. It's a statement by myself, and that also includes two motions. This statement was not approved by any of the other council members, although I do believe that they would agree. For the last couple of months, I've spent many sleepless nights thinking about the current state of the city of Florence. Every time I feel like we fixed something, something else seems to come up. This community, this staff are made up of good, hard-working men and women that deserve responses on issues. A quote in which I seem to believe is fitting is, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men and women to do nothing." This evil was a very dominant trait within our city for many years. That is, until the women that were being victimized by these shameful acts stood up and said, "No more." It took some very strong women to finally end his reign of terror. I commend their strength in coming forward and bringing that darkness into light. It was overdue, and to those women, I can only deeply and sincerely apologize. To Sean and Lori, thank you for finally reporting this issue while your supervisor was still above you, standing there. You stood your ground, you brought it to us, and you also took the risk potentially losing your jobs and jeopardizing your future. And to you both, I say thank you for finally standing up and saying no more also. So here we sit, facing the next step. As your council, we've devised a plan and attempt to begin the rebuilding process of our beloved city of Florence. Tonight, as our current interim city manager prepares to step down, and until our new, more permanent city manager is able to arrive, I would like to make a motion to appoint higher Tom Pilting's Root as the interim city manager. This position would include the authority to hire-fire, working directly with outside HR, which will hopefully bring some stability to our staff and some pride back into our city of Florence and some respect to that seat. I so make the motion.
I'll second that.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Escobell?
No discussion. I agree fully.
Mr. Nysley?
No.
Mr. Yeah, okay.
Vendetti?
Yeah, Mr. Vendetti.
I think it's a very good move.
I, for the mayor, I only speak that I welcome the new interim city manager you voted on. I think it's a step forward into starting to address and heal problems that the city has faced.
Vote.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes.
I would also like to make a motion that we direct the new city man, the new interim city manager, to bring in a forensic auditor for the purposes of conducting a thorough review of city financial history. In doing this, I am hopeful that we will ensure no additional unpleasant surprises come up, so the citizens and the taxpayers and future city council can feel confident that there has been no financial wrongdoing.
So that's motion. May I have a second on that?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Vendetti?
Nothing.
Mr. Nysley?
No.
You know, the only question I have right now is, Mr. Allen, have you looked into the budget that both these recommendations that you have made fit into our budget?
I believe with the loss of some staff and with Sean stepping back to the planning planner, I believe we will have that in our budget.
Okay. And I know that I had visited with Lori. The budget for the HR was good, and I just didn't know about the, no, I'm sorry. I visited. I visited with both of them. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Nysley?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Now we will, uh...
I think I understand the mission you've given me here tonight. It's basically to continue the good works that Sean has already initiated in establishing the trust, respect, professionalism, and most importantly, fidelity in the office of city manager of the city of Florence, Colorado. It's easy to say. It's a little more difficult to execute. I will be guided by three principles. I call it the CAT principles, for lack of a better word. The first principle will be candor. I will never lie to you. I will always tell you the truth. I will never lie to the citizens of Florence, and nor will I lie to the employees of the city of Florence. This may mean that you might hear something you don't want to hear, but again, I will never lie to you. Accountability. I believe in accountability. I will prepare for you, in your council packets, a detailed and exacting review of my efforts as city manager for that two-week period. You will get more than you want to read, I can assure you, but it will be a highly detailed written report, open to the public, and posted on the city's webpage. I will begin the process for employee evaluations. It's my understanding that those have not been conducted in a number of years. It's important that employees understand what their tasks are to do and how well they are doing them. That process will begin tomorrow morning. That also will include you evaluating me. That process will be done in this room, on the record, in front of the public. And you will evaluate me on my performance as your interim city manager. We will determine when that process will be, but that will happen. Transparency. I'm kind of an old tanker from the Army days. I will shine a xenon searchlight onto the administration of this city. I have a number of transparent actions that I am going to enact, most of which require coordination with department heads. But there's a couple that I can execute tonight. In 2016, when I took on the terminated city manager over a ridiculous and dangerous proposal to transfer precious city water to the Sun and Shine Group off Asylum Road for a tomato plant, project, I took on City Hall. I attended council meetings. I attended city planning missions, planning meetings, and I discovered that on some days prior to council meetings, there would be a workshop held in the conference room back here during the day. Many councilmen and councilwomen who worked obviously couldn't make those workshops. There was not an illegal workshop. The press was there. But you didn't have to be Sherlock Holmes to figure out what side of an issue council people were thinking. Those workshops no longer exist. They will not happen on my watch. I will communicate you, with you orally at council meetings, individually as you deem necessary, and via my city manager report. If we are required to have a workshop, it will be done in this room prior to this meeting, on the record. The only time I can contemplate anything not being on the record with you would be advice from your city attorney on a pending legal matter. Everybody understands that issue. I went through the minutes for the past couple of years, and I noticed what I found to be a disturbance, disturbing tendency. The terminated city manager would call an inordinate number of city manager executive sessions. In the seven and a half years that I've served as a previous city manager for the city of Florence, I never called a city manager executive session, and I will never call one as your interim city manager. Those are dead-gone history. I would like to commend you for taking this bold step. I would like to commend Sean Garrett for his efforts to revisit and relive and regenerate, re-innovate the city manager position. Most of all, I'd like to thank the employees of the city of Florence, who, through this time, which one could only describe as the city's darkest hours, the employees of the city of Florence have continued to provide professionalism, dedication, support, services, protection, drinking water, and an administration that allows this city to function. I am proud to join the ranks of, as an employee of this city, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you. Are there any questions of me?
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Tom.
We have other visitors. Mr. Jordan, sir?
Good afternoon. Tim Jordan, 844 Sumo Avenue. The other day during the coffee chat, our mayor got into a discussion with us there about Travelers and how Travelers was ignoring the city attorney. The most recent run loss that I got shows that there's been six claims filed against the city, and it appears that two of them are closed. So that leaves four that's open. Is that, is that correct? I don't know if you can comment from the dials in that, but that's what I have. The second thing was the city attorney's contract. This contract was signed and voted on five and a half years ago. There's no clause in here. There's no clause for a review, for an evaluation, for anything. It says right here, "Representation shall continue, and this agreement shall remain in effect until written notice of termination is delivered to the person or last known address of council or client, as the case may be." So I'm just wondering, how comes the city attorney's contract hasn't been reviewed in five and a half years? Maybe it has, but there's no end date. So I'd like to see you all go into executive session tonight and discuss that and make an end date to where the city attorney is reviewed. The two lawsuits that were filed, there were some allegations made against Krab Law Firm about blowing off governmental immunity acts, failure to preserve evidence and documents. I find that disturbing. What was troubling was coming in here the other day and hearing that Travelers is blowing off the city, but then when I look at the complaints from two lawsuits, it seems like Krab Law Firm is doing the same thing. And I'm wondering why. So I'd like to see you all go into executive session tonight and discuss this. The last thing I have is from the city's statement about the previous lawsuit. I know I was here before. I ran out of time. I have a copy of the investigation report. I've read it twice. I know who's in it, and I know who's not. I know what they did and what they didn't do. So I want to read this here about this lawsuit settlement. A letter requesting a monetary settlement from the law firm of Redacted dated June 12, 2019, and addressed to Mayor Keith Orr, which outlines the complaints made by Redacted concerning her employment with the city of Florence. A follow-up letter from the law firm of Redacted, Colorado Governmental Immunity Act Notice dated July 23, 2019, and addressed to Mayor Keith Orr, identifying the amount of damages being sought as $300,000. A document titled Release, which is the signed settlement agreement and which indicated the city's agreement to a monetary settlement of $54,290.85 awarded to Redacted dated September 13, 2019. It's apparent that Mayor Orr received documents. I don't know if council on that time, whether Mr. Villagrana, Mr. Nysley, or Mr. Vendetti got any of those, but they did go to the mayor. And it seemed to me it went to the city attorney as well. So my question is this. The last thing it says, "A document titled Release, which is the signed settlement agreement and which indicated the city's agreement to a monetary settlement," to me, that should have been brought in front of the entire council at that time, and everyone should have been brought on board. And I'm curious as if anyone remembers that. Keith Orr, I don't know why the documents went to Keith Orr. Why didn't they come to the city? What did he do with them? Did he keep council out of the loop, or did he loop them in? It's right here in the report. So thank you very much for your time. I requested you go into an executive session tonight and discuss those two lawsuits and discuss the city attorney's contract. I think we need a new city attorney moving forward. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burleson?
Rich Burleson, 1134 West Second, Florence, Colorado. Congratulations on an excellent choice to get us in the right direction and get this city back where it needs to be with Tom. I think that's a good move on your behalf. I want to speak for a few minutes on Pioneer Day. Pioneer Day Association, I'm representing that. Several of the other members are here this evening. We have set the date. It's always the third Saturday in September. Please put it in your calendar. Put it on the city planner if it isn't already. Excuse me. I don't know what has been done and what hasn't with city calendars, but it's always the third Saturday. It'll be September 17th, Pioneer Day, and I'm here to ask again for the city's support of the event. This is the 150th year for the city of Florence, and see, we are proud to present that as part of the Pioneer Day as well. Museum will be doing some extra things, as will hopefully some other organizations in the city. In the past, the support from the city has come in the form of parades, providing some police, providing city workers to help block the streets and those sorts of things, and I think we are covered in your insurance for the parade as well. That's been tradition for as long as I have been coming here anyway and asking for your support of this event. So just to make you aware, thank you for your support in the past. Look forward to that again this year, and many of you are involved with the events, Pioneer Day anyway. So thank you once again. Any questions of me?
Are we doing in the park this year?
We are going to the park this year. Pioneer Day Association has assumed full responsibility for the parade, the park, the activities in the park, the vendors in the park, and that's where it will be, as it has been up until last year. So that's where it will be, and the planning has already been underway since January, so we are off to a good step towards doing that. And Charlotte is here representing the Crusader, and they are so thankful. They're giving us a lot of coverage, and they will be our communicator of all things, you know. So we appreciate the work they have done for us as well. So hopefully you'll support us, and I have already turned in the street closure forms. I've turned in the park reservation form, the pavilion form. Those have been turned in. I don't know where they are in the process. Perhaps you haven't done anything with them yet, but just so you know, those have been turned in way ahead of time. Don't want to take any chances that at the last minute, something is found to have not been done. So just so you know, and I appreciate your help, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
Have a good evening.
Old business. Counsel, do we have any old business? Mr. Escobell?
No.
Mr. Nysley?
No.
I do not, Mr. Mayor. None.
And I don't either, so let's go with discussing items, action items. Nine eight, transfer of subdivision improvement agreement for Willow Creek subdivision from WMP Florence Capital LLC to Land Developers Incorporated. Mr. Garrett?
So what this will do would just be transferring the current subdivision improvement agreement that was done back in 2007 from WMP Florence Capital to Land Developers, Inc., who is a new owner and is looking to develop that property. The current owner has no issues with subdivision agreements. I've looked through it. It's a pretty standard one. No issues there. So this is just a simple transfer, as it is written, that it requires that transfer in that subdivision improvement agreement.
Discussion. Any discussion, gentlemen? Mr. Vendetti?
I read it. It looks pretty straightforward.
Mr. Allen?
No discussion.
Mr. Nysley? Mr. Escobell?
No discussion.
Anybody from the public? If not, I will request a motion to, for the transfer of subdivision improvement.
I would make that motion to approve the transfer of the subdivision improvement agreement with Willow Creek Subdivision from WMP Florence Capital LLC to Land Developers, Inc.
Second.
Any discussion? None? Roll call, please. Hold on a second. Yes, ma'am? Please.
Kathy Madonna, 504 Brookway. I just had a quick question. Is this the same Mr. Stoner? Is he just changing the corporation name? What is, what's going on?
So this is Jay Stoner. This is just his corporation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's still?
He'll still be the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
No other? Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Our next item, nine B, Pioneer Day Parade Street Closure Request. Ma'am?
All the paperwork is submitted. This is the normal request that they do every year to close down for the Pioneer Day Parade. We will assist with signage and street closures like normal.
Any discussion, city council? Public discussion? None? Roll call, please.
We need motions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay.
I thought we made that motion. Rich got me confused.
A motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Pioneer Day Parade Street Closure Request.
Second.
Further discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Nysley?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. We go down to nine C, Junk Teak Street Closure Request. Ms. Hill, please.
So this request is for a spring junk teak this year. They're also going to do the fall junk teak, but we'll be closing down the street the same. In the request, Ms. Cristelli is here and has some information for you, but they wanted to go ahead and see if they could add the addition to May 15th to close down the street for the car show also the following day. But all the paperwork is submitted. Ms. Cristelli?
Ladies, please.
I'm Jenny Cristelli. I'm the Florence Chamber of Commerce President.
Renee Pryor, President of the Florence Merchants.
And we are going to be doing a spring junk teak in conjunction with the car show. So the spring junk teak will be Friday and Saturday, and then the car show will be on Sunday, as it traditionally is. And I made an error on the dates when I put it in here. I did not include Sunday, so I need to revise that and include Sunday as part of the closure as well.
Questions?
Can, can we just approve it with Sunday in there?
Yes.
Is that what we're doing? Okay.
Any discussion for the discussion? Then I would accept a motion to... No, I'm sorry. Public comment. This is a confusing thing. No public comment? Motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the Junk Teak Street Closure Request.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Questions for the two ladies? None?
Good job.
Roll call, please.
I just want to verify, counsel, you're good with adding the May 17th date, or May 15th date also to the...
Sunday?
Yes. Thank you. Counselor Vendetti?
Aye.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Ladies, thank you. You got it.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have ordinance number 02222022. An ordinance amending sections of title 17 zoning of the Florence Municipal Code as described in Exhibit Eight. Mr. Garrett?
So what this amendment would be is the current requirements, if a requirement for any type of building and use is not specifically listed herein, shall be determined by the Board of Adjustment after a report and recommendation from the Planning Commission based upon the requirements and comparable uses listed herein. So it has to come before Planning Commission. They make a recommendation, then it's got to go to BOZA. BOZA says yes or no, and then it comes back to Planning Commission. So the proposed is parking requirements for any use of a building not listed shall be determined upon similarity, which is used to estimated traffic counts to listed use... to listed uses and requirements as determined by the Planning Commission. So we would, we would take a step out, expedite that process, take BOZA out, and as BOZA or the Board of Zoning Adjustment is set for variances, it makes more sense to have that approved by the Planning Commission. And Planning Commission did make recommendation for this, this amendment.
Any discussion, Mr. Allen? Mr. Nicely?
No.
Mr. Escabel?
No.
Mr. Vendetti?
Uh, no, sir.
Hi, Roger Duncan, 222 East Main Street. So basically, if someone wants to do something with a building, whether they're going to open a restaurant or a roller skating rink, is what you're saying, is they have to bring that in front of... Okay, I just misunderstood, maybe.
So depending on the zone district and the use, it will require a parking plan be approved by the Planning Commission.
Okay.
If there's a use or a building type that's not listed in that zone district or within our parking requirements, then we'll have to go to Planning Commission, then go to BOZA, and then come back.
Okay.
So this would just take that out, and then they could determine if it's similar to one of the listed uses in there, and say, okay, it's, it's four spots for every thousand square feet, whatever the case may be. They can say it's similar to this, and then just approve it, that method.
Okay, cool. And then I'm assuming we would take the current parking crisis into accountability
Yeah.
for making that decision
Yep.
in a discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Any further public comment? No further discussion from council? Motion and second?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 02-22-22-22 and ordinance amending sections of Title 17 zoning of the Florence Municipal Code as described in Exhibit A.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Escabel?
Yes.
Counselor Nicely?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Now we go down to upcoming agenda items. The mayor's appointment to a parking committee, cost computation, Mr. Garrett?
I won't be presenting that one.
Any discussion for Mr. Garrett?
That'll be Tom's issue, I think.
Is there a request for an executive session?
I, I know that Tim has suggested we, we go into executive session, but I would suggest that we wait for Crystal, who's out not feeling well tonight, and Melissa, who's on a school trip. Before that, that happens, I'd like to have a full council for that one. I believe so.
Further discussion? Mr. Nicely?
I agree.
Mr. Escabel?
What does our new city manager think about... He was just saying we're not going to have anymore of these executive sessions.
No, no, I was, I was referring... I was referring to an executive session that I would call the city manager. Not an executive session as the city attorney would call for, or any of you. Only an executive session that I would call for that the terminated city manager abused, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Vendetti, discussion?
Uh, no, sir.
I believe that, that this whole city council should be here because it does address one of our employees that the city council is responsible for. So I would say that, yes, let's not run into it. So no executive session is needed from me, or from us.
And that would be the fastest city council ever.